It's recording now.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Adjustments to order. I'm gonna do roll call first. Tyler Bradley, Brad Berry.
Right here.
Yeah, thank you. Melissa Hartman is here. Bill Higgins.
Here.
Got it, thank you. Fred Miller. Fred?
I think he's.
He's accused. Thomas Patterson?
Yep.
Yeah. Anthony Underwood?
Here.
Okay. Um, that's it for us. We have the, still have the one vacancy. You want me to go on to Agenda Item 1? Agenda Item 1 is the election of the, a new Chair and a Vice Chair amongst the members. Do I have a nomination from anybody?
I'd like to nominate Melissa Hartman for the Chair.
Alrighty.
A second.
Okay. Second. Uh, I will accept that. Would you, should I call for a vote?
Well, you might ask if there's any other nominations.
Yeah, is there any other nominations? I'll take that.
I move we close the nominations.
Um, I'm sorry, I had to go do something. Who nominated?
Melissa was nominated by Bill Higgins. I seconded.
Okay.
Then I made a motion to close the nominations, which hasn't been seconded.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of Melissa Hartman as Chair?
No, you gotta close the nominations first, Melissa.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm new at this. Are the nominations closed? Is there anybody else?
Call for a vote on the closure of nominations. That would be the procedure.
Who's speaking?
Uh, Mayor Budge.
You're not a member of the commission. You can't make a motion.
I'm not making a motion. I'm, I'm suggesting that she calls for a vote on closing the nominations.
You can handle that.
I'd like to call, call for a vote for closure of the nominations.
Aye.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes. Now, um, a vote on Melissa Hartman as Chair of the Board of Adjustments. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and is approved.
Congratulations, Ms. Hartman.
Hi, thank you. We now need to decide on a Vice Chair amongst the members.
I'd like to nominate Tom.
Any? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'd like to nominate Tom Pat- Patterson for Vice Chair.
Tom Patterson? Are there any other nominations?
Need a second.
I'll second the vote for Tom.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, any other nominations? All right, I move to close the Vice Chair nominations unless there's anything else. Okay. All right then, let's vote. I'd like to, all those in favor of Tom, go ahead.
Sorry, you need a mo- a second on the motion to close nominations for the Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Those darn seconds. All right, with that, that's the, the motion to close nominations. It has been approved. I would now like to, all those in favor of Tom Patterson as Vice Chair, all those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries for Tom Patterson as Vice. Okay, are we good?
You look great.
Okay, are we ready to move on to Item 2? Item 2, Board of Adjustments 2106, Historic District Contributing Property Number 272. The applicants were Paula Bird and Deborah Wood. There'll be a presentation by Brian Hope of the GCGILLC in representing the homeowners. The location of the property is 517A Mayer Avenue, Bisbee. We are here to hear, uh, an appeal, the decision made by the Bisbee Design and Review Board on November 3rd, 2021, and July 7th, 2021, for the DRB Application 21-54 for the demolition of the structure at that address. We have, with that, I will open the hearing. And we will move on to Item B, which is the presentation by the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Uh, present.
Okay, where, where, I'm sorry, where are you? I gotta.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a presentation?
That I do. May I proceed?
I have a real.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little, so.
I have a request before we start. Could, uh, could, uh, could Mr. Hope, uh, join the meeting with video?
I'm sorry, sir, that's not possible. I have custom-built workstations and cameras are not specced in into my computers. I have audio only.
Okay.
Strange.
All right, can, shall we proceed?
Yeah, thank you. Again, my name is Brian Hope. I'm the owner of Hope CGI LLC. I'm in the business of building and construction consulting. I'll be representing homeowners Deborah Wood and Paula Bird this evening. This appeal is regarding the denial of the Design Review Board of a justifiable proposal for demolition of a dilapidated and dangerous building. The timeline and supporting documentation are as follows. April of 2020, Deborah Wood and Paula Bird purchased a decaying 600-square-foot, single-family residence at 517A Mayer, with the intent of renovating the dilapidated building, subsequently making it their home. The property is in the Historic Preservation Overlay District and does have a contributing status. Uh, the structures are timber-to-earth construction and has no bearing footing or foundation. On 10/13 of 2020, the property owners filed a building permit application, paid the applicable fees, and were issued a building permit on 10/22 of 2020 for, among other items, a foundation wall, forms, and reinforcement. The wood floors were demoed to facilitate the jacking of the building so that the footing and foundation could be constructed. During the lift operation, the building displayed into traffic failure and work was halted. In the interest of safety, workers applied nylon straps and steel cables to prevent complete collapse. Realizing that the building is structurally unsound, the homeowners made the difficult decision to dismantle the building, salvage any materials which might be saved and reused. July 7th of 2021, the property owners came before DRB. Uh, that's item number 2154, with the intent of securing a demolition permit and building new using as much of the salvage as possible. Property owners were not made aware of the specific criteria needed to obtain a demolition permit, which is in City of Bisbee zoning code 355. As such, DRB's finding was that insufficient information was presented to approve the request, tabled the proposal, pending required submittals. At that time, Chair Shondi Kramer, since resigned, wrongly demanded both a cost analysis and complete construction documents in order to even consider the proposal. These.
Excuse me, point of order, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, it would be best if you don't assume that the actions on somebody else was defective with inflammatory language. Just state the facts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Understood. Uh, these demands, which were presented as requirements, are not in keeping with zoning code 355. On the 3rd of November, 2021, the matter was brought before DRB again. The property owners made an 11th-hour decision to scale back the project. This was brought to the Board's attention. It was made clear that the, only the proposed demolition was to be considered. The complete DRB proposal, as presented, is included here in your packets. Supporting documentation included high-resolution photographs showing the extent of the dilapidation, light R data showing the existing structural conditions have stressed the building elements beyond their intended purpose, code analysis which demonstrates the building is both uninhabitable and dangerous per IRC, IBC, IEBC, IPMC, and the standard for the abatement of dangerous buildings, all presented. A letter from a licensed contractor stating that rehab is infeasible. I'd like to read that letter now so that it's introduced into the record. This is.
I move we accept the letter as written.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, one more time.
Reading a lot of documents. We have a document.
If we could, this is a public, sorry, if we could, this is a public hearing and the applicant has the right to present his position. If he wishes to read it into the record, then we need to let him read it into the record.
No.
Thank you. I, I, I wish to read this into the record. It has been my experience in the past that civic advisory boards do not always read what is given to them in their packets. I, I would like this in the record.
Thank you. Thank you for the Board of Confidence.
Sir, please proceed and read the, read the letter.
Yes, please. Thank you. This is from Michael Stefan, President of Satori Builders Incorporated. Uh, Michael is licensed in California and Arizona. His company has won numerous awards. He has been published numerous times, most recently in Architectural Digest. He knows of what he speaks. Dated 9 September, 2021, to whom it may concern, after evaluating 517A Mayer, it is my professional opinion that the building is condemnable, should be demolished. In both technical and financial terms, it does not present feasible opportunity for renovation. The building violates every building code in the book and is too far gone to restore. It simply isn't practical to rehab. It's impossible to determine the cost to rebuild it in place because it would have to be contracted under time and material. Also, TNM would cost significantly more than demolition, new construction, and no reputable contractor would touch it under those terms. Sincerely, Michael Stefan, President, Satori Builders. Also have a letter from a licensed, registered professional engineer bearing his seal and stamp. He declared the building to be structurally unsound and a hazard to the public. I would like to read this letter now to introduce it into the record. From George P. Lounsbury PE, uh, for those of you who are unfamiliar with that, that's an acronym for Professional Engineer. That is the highest degree of certificate, certification attainable in the engineering sphere. Uh, Mr. Lounsbury has 30-plus years' experience, most of which in structural. Uh, findings and determination dated, uh, 27 September, 2021, excuse me, findings and determination. I performed a visual investigation of the existing structure at 517A Mayer Avenue, Bisbee, Arizona. The structure is a single-family residence that consists of 1x12 vertical boards with horizontal exterior siding for the wall framing in a framed roof system. Where the floor exists, it appears to be of wood construction. Overall, the building is in very poor condition. The structure has no foundation or floor, is supported only by temporary bracing and bottlejacks. There's extensive rot and mold damage throughout the bottom of the 1x12s. There is evidence of major termite damage as well. The roof framing has major fire damage. There does not appear to be a plum wall anywhere in the structure. It is my professional opinion that this building is structurally unsound and a hazard to the public and should be removed. Due to the extensive damage observed, I recommend that a general contractor be consulted to verify that it is technically and financially infeasible to rehab the building. Marked as failed, signed and stamped, George Lounsbury PE. Moving on. Despite the stipulation that only the demolition was to be considered, DRB made a focal point of the lack of the proposed design for new construction. Additionally, AZ SHIPO Standards for Rehab state that the standards, I'm quoting now, "are to be applied to specific rehabilitation projects in a reasonable manner, taking into consideration" economic and technical feasibility. DRB denied this proposal without considering feasibility and indirect contradiction of City of Bisbee zoning code 355. Uh, to be fair, there were two DRB members present that night who acknowledged the documentation and the fact that the condition for demolition permit was met. Um, it's my assertion that the conditions for demolition are met. The, the ordinance in full is copied there in your packet. I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, but I will read my highlighted text from, uh, City of Bisbee zoning 355. For permit approval, the applicant must show that preserving the building is not physically and/or economically feasible. Item A for approval, the Design Review Board may recommend approval of the demolition or relocation permit if any, any of the following conditions exist. Skipping to, uh, item number 2 in that list, a determination is made that a building or structure no longer presents an opportunity for feasible rehabilitation, which is arrived at after an onsite visit by licensed contractor, structural engineer, or architect experienced in historic preservation work. All costs shall be borne by owner. Item B, condition of denial. If preservation or rehabilitation is determined to be feasible and, and if the structure has been designated as one having special significance or as a contributing property within the district, DRB shall deny the permit. Regard to those items, 355A stipulates that approval is recommended if any of the published conditions are met. There are four there. We only need to meet one. 355A2 stipulates that feasibility may be determined by a site visit from a licensed contractor or engineer. We've given you two. 355B stipulates that denial is recommended if rehab is determined to be feasible and if the property is designated as significant or contributing. The first condition of the compound requirement test falls, therefore, the whole argument fails. Moving on, Article 262 of the zoning code establishes and defines the powers and duties of DRB. 262C, 262D are applicable to the matter at hand. These sections read as follows. 262C, "It shall be the responsibility of the applicant to prove to the Design Review Board or its designee, the planning and zoning administrator, that the project in question conforms with the intent and purpose established in this ordinance and with the adopted design guidelines." The homeowners complied with this. 262D, "Design Review Board upon hearing an application shall impose such reasonable conditions as it may deem necessary in order to carry out the provisions and intent of this ordinance." Uh, it's my assertion that DRB imposed unreasonable conditions in 1, the demands of 7721 being a cost analysis and full construction documents, and 2, its demands for a new design being at the ready during the most recent hearing. Logic and the supporting documentation demonstrate that the condition for approval of the proposed demolition was met and that the condition for denial failed. Despite the prevented flat, facts, DRB flagrantly ignored City of Bisbee zoning code. The denial of DRB 2154 was without authority, a capricious countermand, a city ordinance by a civic advisory board. Design Review Board does not have the authority to override, alter, or amend city ordinance. So, all that said, my clients are asking nothing more of you than we asked the DRB, and that being a fair and impartial assessment of the facts rather than an emotion-driven denial of property owners' rights. Uh, that's all I have for now. I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Um, are we ready for a presentation by the city staff?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Nina, do we hold any questions of the applicant until after both presentations have been made?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm going to read into the record before Mr. Taylor starts. Canyon Consultant LLC. It's, uh, "Opinion of residential structure, structural condition of 517A Mayer Avenue. Canyon Consultants LLC, Jerry Cannon, and the WLB Group, John Wise, have recently reviewed the condition of the residential structure, house, at 517A Mayer Avenue, Bisbee, Arizona. Specific areas observed were the rooms where the floor and the ceiling have been removed. The house, three rooms, is a wood-framed building, wood tresses, walls, roof framing. The house has undergone construction, which includes removal of the floor down to earth, earth and grade, as well as ceiling removal. Interior studs have been placed in portions of the house, as well as new ceilings in one room. In another room, the ceiling has been reinforced with wood beams. One interior wall has been removed as well. Exterior sheathing has been exposed in some areas. Overall, the house is in a state of disrepair. The house has been compromised relative to overall structural integrity due to the removal of the floor, walls, support studs, and ceiling. It is my professional opinion the house will be able to be repaired and restored, rebuilt, and saved without demolition based on its current condition and ability to correct the issues pertaining to the floor, walls, and ceiling components, as well as the exterior improvements to the exterior walls, siding, and roof. Applicable and required architectural engineering plans should be provided demonstrating satisfactory improvements as well as compliance with other local jurisdiction regulations and ordinances, include, including in the Bisbee Historic District. The house is typical of wood-framed residence that I once owned in Bisbee, which I was able to rehab, making us of a second home. As mentioned above, in my professional opinion, this house can be rehabbed. With the cost of building materials, it would make sense as the majority of the 517A Mayer Avenue houses still remains intact and can be reused." And that is from Jerry Cannon. He's a structural engineer for Cannon Consultants LLC.
Thank you.
Um, does that conclude the presentation from city staff?
No, ma'am. If you give me just one moment, I'll let Mr. Taylor know that he, he's ready. I think he's coming around to the computer.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty, so thank you for bearing with us. I'm going to, I'm going to assume that everyone read my, uh, my staff report. I do want to, just for the record, state that on 5/13, the applicant was, served a stop-work order by the building inspector because of illegal work on, that was 5/13/2020. On 5/20/2020, they applied for a permit, and that permit was for the removal of the interior hardwood floors and that the, uh, uh, structure, uh, and they would install concrete footings. The, uh, work would be done with the exception from the, uh, the, uh, code exception that the owner would perform the work. That work probably was not done on 10/13/2020. Another application was applied for, and this one was the owner as contractor, and this was for, uh, front steps, new plumbing, new electric, foundation, and a new roof. The, uh, work was done to the point where the flooring, the, um, uh, joists, the supports, and whatever foundation work was under there, uh, four-by-fours, whatever it was, were removed. It was sitting on dirt. Uh, it may have been previously, but it was sitting on dirt. The next time that they came to, uh, the city was when they were applying for a re, a demo permit, which they were told they needed more information and given time to do that, so it was tabled. That was in 7/21/21, I believe. Then at 11/3/21, they came back for a demolition permit, and that was, uh, denied, and that is why they are here. The, somewhere in the middle of all this, they took down at least a quarter of the square footage of the building illegally, the rear portion, because they had documented in, in their need to, uh, have a permit that the building was too close to the wall behind, and that, that part of the building is now, in fact, uh, demoed. I just wanted to give the chronology. What I do feel is that these applicants, for whatever reason, went and started demo work illegally, and that they were stopped, and then, and though they were stopped, they were, uh, and they served, they, they, uh, applied for a permit and were given a permit, and they still went out of the scope of the permit and demoed the entire floor. Now, anybody who knows building will know that demoing the joists and the flooring will put a building into extreme jeopardy. And that's the way they, they left it one and a half years ago, and it still stands, which I think is a testament to, uh, the construction of 120 years ago. The work done was illegal. And they now have a building without a floor, and there were straps added, I, I saw that. But what they don't tell you is that an engineer and a contractor came in and looked at the building after the floor and joists were removed, and of course, anybody would tell you at that point a building is in jeopardy, and that's what they told us. Now, the applicant's representative who just spoke stated that the engineer was the highest engineer possible, that's great, and that the contractor was somebody who was in Architectural, whatever it was, magazine. What he doesn't tell you is that that contractor wasn't licensed in Arizona until December. And that for, for three months after the letter, the, the contractor was unlicensed in Arizona. So, the contractor, it says specifically in the code that the contractor must be a licensed contractor and that the engineer needs to be a structural engineer. Well, he didn't provide a structural engineer. He provided a civil engineer. And a civil engineer will look at a building and say, I don't know. And it says in the code that the building, that the engineer, the, uh, the, um, contractor and the architect, if you choose to pick an architect, need to be experienced in the historic preservation. Both the people that we have testifying for you, Mr. Cannon and Mr. Wilson, you'll get the Mr. Wilson in a little while, are not only in historic preservation, but in historic preservation in Bisbee, which is different than historic preservation possibly in San Diego where the contractor came from, and historic preservation. historic preservation possibly in San Diego where the contractor came from and historic preservation in Benson, where the engineer came from. Both of these people have done work in Bisbee. What I want to emphasize is that the uh, applicant, the owners got themselves into this jam by not taking the advice of professionals early on and getting guidance. When they first knew they were in trouble, they should have gotten someone involved. Perhaps they're, they're representative or an engineer or a contractor. And they didn't do that and they, I don't know why they chose to continue and I don't understand why they think that this building should be demolished. It is a contributing building in Bisbee. And contributing is an important factor. It gives it a number. It gives it a, a a place in the, in the historic register. It's not a, a fabric building. It's a special building, building and we're going to honor that with preserving the building. We do realize that we want to weigh the rights of the owner with the rights of the community and we have here a dedicated uh, historic district and that has requirements and uh, obligations, if you will, to live up to the historic needs of the, of the district. So when a person comes in here and, and buys a home, it needs, and that home was in, it was in pretty good shape where they wouldn't have bought it because they're, they're amateur uh, contractors, as far as I can tell, because it was going to be homeowner performed. So I'm gonna make it a little short here. I've made it a little longer than I intended, but what we want to emphasize is that this building is salvable. It has been looked at by contractors. It has been looked at by a structural engineer. And it is their opinion that this is a salvageable building. I rest my case.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Moving on. Are there any comments from persons in favor of this proposal?
In favor?
Linda, okay, so noted. Do you have any comment?
I I'm gonna read something as quickly as I can because I have a short period of time. I just want to thank the board for allowing me to speak as a concerned citizen of the city of Bisbee. As I said, my name's Linda Santanas. I am speaking in favor of demolition requests for the property being discussed. The review board looked at this matter several months ago. The board requested the app to show proof of structural engineer, registered architect or licensed contractor. The applicants did hire Mr. Hope. They went ahead and uh, did all the research or Mr. Hope did the research and requested, um, okay, I'm gonna backtrack here for a second. Applets hired Mr. Hope who provided extensive research and information necessary to meet the request of the DRB. Mr. Hope provided the DRB with more information than had been requested, including two very important letters. The general contractor and one from the registered structural engineer. You need to present one. They both agreed that the structure was unsound and should be demolished. And I know that we had several people speak. There were or there was a general contractor. Well, I would call him a contractor, but he works under a general contractor that was on site and did do was going to contract to do some work. From the date of the original application to today, there have been several changes at the DRB. The first of being we have now a new city planner. And the second was the loss of our DRB chair and another member. Which have both been replaced at this time and were at the last board meeting. None of these who were at the initial meeting where the applicant made their original presentation. That same evening, there was another application that was approved by over, with over ninety percent of the structure being demolished. The difference was that there was no opposition to it. And for many, therefore, I ask the board just to take into consideration what has happened previously. I don't know any of the applicants and I'm baffled at what happened. Why this applicant? Why the heavy opposition? Why the request for a letter against this application? And not one, not one spoke against the demolition of the other applicant. Regardless of what may happen previously between the city and the applicants. I think that the board needs to look at this in an unemotional, impartial way. One of my concerns has to do with the disposal of the structural engineers stamped sealed and signed documentation from the design review board. This country has a list of individuals that are actually considered and called.
Time's analysis, you have thirty seconds.
Okay, I'm gonna finish it by saying it's a demolition is not approved. What is the applicant to do with this home that is structurally unsound and the city is being or not allowing them to tear it down? I can only guess that they can either possibly do nothing since they cannot, which will lead to further destruction of the structure. Uh, possibly walk away from the property and move away from Bisbee, possibly sue the city of Bisbee for in order for them to move forward.
Time is up.
The structure can collapse on a citizen or class.
Thank you. We now move to comments by persons opposed.
Is there anyone else? I think there's more people.
Excuse me, are there more people that would like to speak that are in favor? Pardon me.
Scott, perfect. I'm right now, I'm the sitting chair, a sitting vice chair of the DRB. I'd like to uh, premise my opinion about this item, uh, item twenty one fifty four that was initially presented July seventh, twenty twenty one, is that I feel that this item ought to have been, should have been passed for demolition by the DRB. The initial presentation which took place was tabled because the board was requesting additional information, which was fine. They came back, there's a second presentation, November of twenty one. They included the additional documentation and more by far exceeding what was, what was requested at the first time. Suddenly the voices that had indicated in the initial meeting that demolition was feasible, suddenly had become the opposition. And I think that uh, the demolition was denied because there was a, a ground swell of opposition suddenly. And the homeowners were wronged by the board. Okay, now for the year and a half or a year plus, a couple of months that I've been sitting on the board, the guidelines have been in a liquid state and influenced by external pressures. Until recently, uh, very recently, the pressure now is being applied internally. And I think this needs to be looked at. And my question is, what, what, what kind of message does this send to the public? That uh, and, and I can't help but speculate that there is a looming presence of a moving target DRB guidelines that need to be satisfied by someone coming before the board to do this type of project. We are losing trust of our community and we have, uh, that we have their best interest at heart. Where it seems like it is, uh, it becoming a little more internally focused at uh, what the best interest might be. Our na- our actions need to be guided and not spearheaded. We can do better than this and I think this needs to be taken a look at much closer than we are working on this, which we hear quite a bit. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there other comments in favor? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, then I will move on. Do we have any comments for persons opposed? Yes, Mr. Is it Liptly? Go ahead.
Yes, uh, this is Ben Lepley. I serve on the DRB. I've been on a DRB for more than two years continuously. Uh, I'm a registered architect. Uh, I live full time in Bisbee. And uh, I've got a staff of ten. And uh, we have many large projects that are historic preservation projects in Bisbee. Including the Warner Hotel, the American Legion on Subway Street and the Review on Main Street. Uh, all very technically difficult and complex historic preservation projects. I've been to this uh, house on Mayor Street uh, before the applicants started their work. And I followed this project very closely through its very unfortunate and tragic path that it's taken. I agree completely with the assessment of our city planner. Um, that the course of action taken by the owners has been not only illegal but dysfunctional. Um, and has caused the DRB to lose trust of the applicant's ability and honesty um, in their application due to applying for one thing and doing something else completely. The DRB was founded and its sole purpose is to protect the historic integrity of the city of Bisbee and the properties that make up an historic fabric of this city. There is an unfortunate movement within the DRB to take that function away and be more on design. And I disagree completely with that. Uh, it is my professional opinion that this house is still salvageable. And the house sitting behind me right now that I'm in was in much worse condition than that house is currently. That is all.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to speak, uh, who's opposed? Yes.
Hi, good evening. Hi, uh, my name is Sean De Kramer. Um, I'm the former chair of the DRB. First off, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening and thank the city of Bisbee for taking this matter very seriously. That's before you this evening. One, I wanted to start back to the applicants and the application process and the reason the uh, the original application was tabled on my last hearing before my resignation. Um, at the time that that application came before us, uh, the board was very, uh, very, I, I don't even know if split or divided is the right term. It was very, um, it was very, a very chaotic application. Because when the applicants came before us, um, they came before us requesting demolition because the cost to rehabilitate the structure was too great. Um, the reason for my suggestion um, to the board at that time, and I'd like everybody to remember that that board is not just one member. Each, each motion that each, or each idea that gets presented has to go through a motion process and a vote. So um, the, the personal swipe that was against me, I didn't have the power to solely make this decision of the DRB. And I think that that needs to be mentioned that we did vote as a group to table it. There may have been some in favor. Uh, there may have been some opposed, but obviously that was unanimous that it was in favor that we tabled the issue. And we asked for a cost analysis because what was brought before us was simply that the fact that it was too costly to rehabilitate. And there was I do have to agree with the current city planner um, wholeheartedly that the applicants are the demise of the, of the building and the structure that it's currently in. Um, there were several illegal actions that were done. Or the building inspector had to issue a stop order. There's been, the, the scope of work has gone beyond every permit, every application that's gone into the DRB. And now we're in this situation. I have a couple of things that I took out of the letters uh, that came in.
Kramer, you have thirty seconds.
All right, the engineer stamp that came in, I seriously questioned the validity of that, especially when somebody says it violates every code in the book. Um, typically a, a report would have a listing and findings that would be a little more substantial and give you a little bit more to stand on. Um, two, most houses in Bisbee are built on dirt. Local contractors raise them. Uh, they pour foundations, they pour footings. This is common work. It's not anything out of the scope and anything that anybody should be real alarmed with.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak that are opposed? Says inspector.
Yeah, hold on, I think they need to unmute.
Very good. I'd like to say, my name is Al Strati. I've renovated quite a few properties here in Bisbee. Uh, starting on O K Street and going on down into the entrance to town on, on Naco Road. And uh, if you look at this structure right here, it's a current view of one thirty two Naco Road, which was in much worse shape than the building on Mayor when we started. Uh, this building uh, required all of the techniques that have been talked about, uh, jacking, uh, new footer, all that kind of stuff, a new frame internally, but we saved the building and it's now an asset to town. Uh, I rest my case on that and I'd like to move on.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak that's opposed?
My name's John Sky. I work with Lithic Construction. Uh, I went over to the house and talked to these ladies when they were in the very beginning of this. I explained to them how to save it. Uh, I even gave them a quote for twenty five thousand dollars to do all the floors, solid concrete and pour out all the walls and make it structurally sound so they could run their plumbing, electrical, et cetera, et cetera, in the walls and then do their sheet rock and, you know, put whatever flooring or use the concrete flooring. Which was a very, very reasonable bid. Um, really the DRBs they're not, they're not there. If you buy a historical building and you cannot afford to fix it, that's not the DRB's problem. It's like someone that wants to drive a Porsche. If you can't afford a Porsche, you don't drive a Porsche, you drive a Honda. So that shouldn't even be an issue. And I've, I would like to, I would buy the house from those ladies for what they paid for it and I would restore it myself. And I'll, I'll try to reach out to them about that later on, because it seemed like they really got themselves in a mess at this point. Um, other than that, uh, I also have, I don't know if uh, my partner had sent an email. I hope it gets read. If not, I'll read it to you. Uh, and we're licensed electricians, plumbers. We've jacked up three story houses uh, that Ram Jack said would cost three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to do. That would have been another demolition, the three story apartment complex on Youngblood Hill. They said that couldn't be done. That was done, is just a little house. So it can be done and we gave them a very like a great price to make that place structurally sound with all the floors intact and ready for uh, remodels. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments uh, from opposition?
Ms. Hartman, I have several that I need to read into the record.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
This one is from Michael McHartman, who is up on Warren Hill. He would like to put this in the record that he is not in support of the demolition of that home located at five seventeen A Mayor Avenue. He thinks that there are too many demo, if there are demolitions, there was already one up there. And he does not support another demolition of a historic property that's contributing.
Thank you.
This one is from. This one is from Michael Graves. He believes he can provide expert testimony as to the preservation, rehabilitation, restoration, and reconstruction of historical, historically significant properties in Bisbee. Lithic Construction has rehabilitated many properties in the historic district, including 155 Brewery Avenue, 115 Brewery Avenue, 132 Naco Highway, as well as others. He maintains the rehabilitation of 517A Mayor is more economically viable than demolition and rebuilding. The current structural status of the building is a direct result of original foundation and floors having been removed. An affordable and efficiency solution was proposed to the owners a year ago using Ford concrete and interior furring. However, the owners chose another path. America's old homes are national treasures, unique and imperiled. They tell the story of Americans past and deserve to be preserved for their, her future. And then I have one from Nanette Slusser. She's writing today in support of retaining the existing structure at 517A Mayor Avenue. Creating a historic district with the Department of Interior and the state historic preservation office is a long, arduous task. It requires the analysis of every structure in the district, proposed boundaries. Down to every exterior and architectural detail. Although most historic districts include both contributing and non-contributing structures, districts are valued based on the overall character and volume of the properties within it. Old Bisbee is unique among historic districts in Arizona, while most districts are purely residential. Our Bisbee historic district includes a variety of residential and commercial buildings, government and non-governmental structures, as well as educational and religious. The local Bisbee economy relies heavy on arts, entertainment, hospitality, recreate, creation within the historic district. The historic charm and architecture are major tourism attractors. Her husband Tom Slusser and her have restored eight of Bisbee's oldest and least maintained properties in the past fourteen years. Many of the properties they have restored are considered, were considered for demolition, thus seriously affecting the value of the surrounding properties. It is often easier and less expensive to build new structures than to preserve the historic integrity of a neighborhood by restoring or rehabilitating old structures. In terms of local economic vitality and employment preservation, projects contribute more to the local economy than do new buildings. We understand the challenges of taking on a significant restoration project in the community. These challenges do not negate the need for buyers to perform through due diligence as it relates to each individual property before acquisition. A historic district is greater than the sum of its parts. Individual structures provide context and continuity, allowing a district to retain its character. Maintaining old Bisbee historic integrity is vital to our continued economic and cultural viability. We strongly encourage the board to deny the demolition of 517A Mayor. I have one for Dell Miller. He is writing in regard to the house at 517A Mayor. He's lived in Old Bisbee for the past five years on Tombstone Canyon. And he walks up Mayor nearly every day. 517A is a cute historic building that closely matches the one next to it. He went to view the house with a realtor friend when it was last for sale in 2020. At that point, there was no need at all to tear it down. It was sturdy and had all the historic details like doors and trims inside of it. I do not think it is fair that it is demolished now that it has been worked on and torn into. I'm sure there are plenty of ways to stabilize and restore the home to its former appearance. I believe it's important to respect and restore the homes in our town and to take care step by step to keep the historic beauty intact. 517A Mayor should not be torn down. I have two more. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
This one is from Patrick Wilson. Give me just one second. I gotta find that page. He says the building in question has been partially demolished. Most of the walls were adequately secured and the roof remains intact. And his bottom line up front is that he believes that most of the building is salvageable. In the board's packet, there are pictures with his determination for all of those. This one is from Al Martinez. He's the superintendent for Conklin Concrete. Al went out on his own pertaining, partnering with Todd Conklin. Al has great ability with concrete. And he is the best concrete man in Bisbee. There's no, let's see. He does not support the demolition of this historic home. And then I have one last one. I apologize. This is from Peter Gaffer. He's also on the DRB. And he was, his is, I'm a member of the DRB and I voted against the approval of the application to demolish a house at 517A Mayor Avenue. He would like to offer some comments and clarifications in support of his decision. The subject house is a contributing property of the historic preservation overlay. Contributing properties are a finite and irreparable, irreplaceable resource. It is a single-story dwelling of simple design and construction typical of Bisbee. It benefits from a southern exposure and is set back from the busy thoroughfare of Tombstone Canyon, while still being within a short walk from the center of Bisbee. It is reached by a short, steep set of stairs which were worthy of replacement. However, stair improvements would justify regardless whether the house were restored or replaced. The structural integrity of the house was jeopardized by the aggressive demolition within the building prior to the development of a robust rehabilit, rehabilitation program. Regrettably, the applicants had advanced this demolition prior to notifying the DRB, nonetheless, it is his, I am of the opinion that the shell of the house is imminently salvageable and can be made structurally sound. Although not a requirement from the permission for demolition, the applicants have stated they plan to replace the existing house with a new building and have indicated that this would be a more cost-efficient solution than rehabilitation. However, at neither of the hearings have they presented their proposal for the new building, and so no sound case can be made for a cost comparison. Accordingly, he believes that the DRB would have been derelict in its responsibilities if it had approved the unfettered demolition of 517A Mayor. From time to time, the Design Review Board, a volunteer body which strives to represent the best interests of the city of Bisbee, will make a judgment call which will subsequently overturned upon appeal by the Board of Adjustment. However, the overturning of the DRB's decision in this particular case will substantially lower the bar for demolition of contributing properties. In turn, this will establish a precedent precedent which will enable others to appeal denials of demolition applications and inevitably result in the erosion of Bisbee's historical heritage. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Are there any other persons wanting to speak as an opposed? All right, we now, we're gonna move on. Is there rebuttal by the applicant?
Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll keep this short. Nobody is questioning the possibility of rehab. Nobody said this is impossible. You know, you're preaching to the choir here. I'm not a big fan of tearing down buildings, but in this case, I have to bend. We're talking about the feasibility here. Every step of the way, my clients have done what the city has asked of them, and every step of the way, the target has moved. Per zoning code, my clients have met the conditions for demolition. The city has not met the condition for denial. And with that, I'll rest. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else with any more rebuttal from anyone from the applicant? We now move to rebuttal by the city staff.
I'm gonna let Joe Ward speak first, please.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Joe Ward. I'm the building inspector for the city of Bisbee. I want to point out to the Board of Adjustments that the city staff has no financial incentive to disagree with the incentives with the applicants. We, we merely think it's what we, we're doing what we think is the right thing to do without any financial incentives. It's in the zoning code on 3.5.5B, it says that the Design Review Board may recommend approval for demolition. And there's no, there's no requirement. The way it was presented was like, well, they have to. No, they don't have to. It's not a requirement. They may, not they should, not that they shall. You know, those things should be worried. Preservation is feasible on this building. You've heard the testimony of the structural engineer, the numerous general contractors and expert witnesses that we have. And the, the, the Designer Review Board, they're experts with experience in judging historic preservation feasibility. But the majority of the Designer Review Board declines demolition. I personally have seven years and eleven months as a building inspector for the city of Bisbee, which gives me a really good oversight on what goes on and what's feasible and what isn't. And I've got forty-three years of construction experience and twenty years as a licensed general contractor. I've determined that the building is, is favorable and it is, it is not a happy, it is not a negativity from, from the standpoint of finances. They'll actually be saving money by preserving the building.
Thank you for your comments.
Bisbee's unique in, in the work that's done here and the work that, the product that we work with. And so the Bisbee contractor very much understands what is required and what can be done. You know, you don't, many times you don't know what can be done until you've done it, and it's the case of that here. But the, the project here is not extraordinary. And there's the, in our zoning code, 3.5.1, it says the purpose of the, purpose of the historical designer view and preservation overlay district is intended to encourage and enhance the historic character, natural attractiveness of the city of Bisbee. And there it says in five, in 5.3, the purpose, this is the, I'm talking about the overlay zone also in the zoning code. The historic preservation overlay zone and historic district is intended to protect, preserve, and enhance the city's character, historical significance, and distinctive architecture. Tearing down this house is not going to meet either of those goals. The, the DRB is under no obligation to arbitrarily approve the demolition of a building just because somebody wants it or says, they say so. Our historic district is dependent on review to the Board of Adjustment. The structure is contributing. It should be saved. We cannot permit the district to be gutted. Ownership in historic districts has obligations. This is meeting the obligations by repairing the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, any other rebuttal by city staff? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I am. Let me just, we had a little bit of difficulty. Please forgive me for a little dishevelness. I'm going to give you full disclosure on myself as Joe did on himself or himself. I am a registered licensed architect. I've been in historic preservation for over forty years. I also was a licensed contractor and historic preservationist. I can judge this. I'm not going to make a judgment, but I could judge this. It's, I do take the word of a structural engineer and a contractor in Mr. Cannon and Mr. Willison. Will, Wilson. I feel that they have said it better than we could. I have heard the applicant refer to emotional testimony and his, his supporters have also said emotional. I would rather be emotional and doing this for emotion because I care about the city than to do it for my own monetary gain and just say whatever I think the client wants to hear. "I'm just following orders" was said a long time ago when I was a little kid. And I don't think it should continue to be said by anybody that lives in Bisbee. There has been no proof of any financial need to finish this. And they could, they could hire someone. It's not a financial issue. They have not shown any evidence of it being financial, and that was one of the requirements of the code, that it be either financial and/or structural problems. They did find a, a, an engineer that would say it was in bad shape, and they found a guy from California that would say it was in bad shape. They could find people all day long that would contradict it. He could probably find a couple of more engineers that would say it was in bad shape. It can, if nobody would sign it and put their license on the line for the rehab, and that's what the structural engineer, Mr. Cannon, has done. We do run the risk of losing our historic heritage. It's in jeopardy here in Bisbee. If we tear down every building and build up something new that looks sort of historic, we're going to end up with a Disneyland, and that isn't what we want. This is unique in that it is part of a living entity. It is a, you know, it's not a Sturbridge Village. It's not a Williamsburg. It's a living community. And we have a trust that's been put on our shoulders to protect this. And I really hope that everybody realizes that. Now, the applicant has recourse. If you deny demolition, they can go to Superior Court. That is a, a place to go. So it's not like they, their rights are being violated. They have more, more alternatives, but please, I, we have to keep the city in, in the integral fa, fabric of the city. So thank you. I, I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Are there any more comments from either side? With that, I would entertain a motion to close the, close the hearing. You muted, Tom. Mr. Higgins? Is there a second to that motion? I'm sorry. Who said, who did, who did it? Was there a second to the motion to close the hearing?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Bradbury. The hearing is closed. Next is discussion of the appeal.
You need to take a vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. All those in favor of closing the hearing with an I?
If all the board members could unmute themselves so they could be heard on the record. Mr. Patterson, you're muted.
Tom, you're muted.
You're muted.
Excuse me. Once it's, a motion is made and seconded, isn't it typical to open it for discussion unless someone moves and seconds the motion to close discussion and it's voted by a majority?
Not on a procedural motion to close a hearing. There's usually no discussion on a motion to close a hearing.
Okay, so any, any comments we would have would be done in special session.
You have the opportunity to make comments in your discussion on the appeal. This is just, this is just for the public hearing portion of the meeting.
That was, yeah, I'm sorry. That was my initial question, but you couldn't hear me because I was muted and.
Yeah, sorry. For procedural wise, you do the, the hearing where the applicant puts on their.
Thank you. Thank you. That makes all the sense in the world. And thank you.
So let me re, let me rephrase this. Closing of the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
I thought we had a motion. Yes.
We just need to vote. We just need to.
Yeah, we just need to vote now. Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing with an I?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You'll have to guide me now. Discussion of the appeal application among the board members. I need, I'm not clear.
The portion of the meeting where the board members discuss the application, discuss their positions. Nina, would you like to read in Mr. Miller's letter at this time, or did you already do that?
I did that. Yeah, I believe I did. Hold on just a second. Yeah, I didn't.
I don't think you did.
Yeah, you did too.
Yeah, I did, because he's the one that lives next to it. He walks up. Yeah, I did, because he's the one that lives next to it. He walks up Mayor nearly every day. And it should not be torn down.
All right.
Point, point question. Do we want to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, Tom Patterson, Ward One, other for Tombstone Canyon. A couple of comments.
I do apologize before you start. Joe, I did forget to read Mr. Miller's opinion. Can I do that now or is it too late?
That's what I thought.
Fred Miller, not Dale Miller.
I waited until, I waited until now because he is a board member, so it could fall under board discussion even though he's here.
I do apologize. I was thinking Dale Miller, not Fred Miller.
Yes.
Okay, so let's hear his letter and then we'll get back to you, Tom.
That's fine.
I apologize.
No, you don't need to apologize, Naina. We wouldn't even be able to function without you.
Thank you. This letter is from Mr. Miller. He apologizes to the board for missing his first meeting, but he is traveling. He, I have read the background minutes of the DRB meetings, the charge and obligations of the BO, of the Board of Adjustments and as well as supporting documents from City of Bisbee staff, letter of support for DRB decisions and the structural engineer report. I have also visited the site at five seventeen A Mayor and talked with one of the owners who coincidentally was president, present. I vote to uphold the DRB's decision to deny a permit for demolition of the structure at five seventeen A Mayor. It is not with any joy or righteousness that I reached this decision. It simply is that the structure can be rehabilitated and thereby keep the historic foundations of Old Bisbee intact. In many cities and towns, a structure in the condition of five seventeen A could be demolished without a murmur. But this is not any city. The fundamental character of Bisbee is defined in large part by the very structures that were built as the city developed. The stability of history should not be compromised brick by brick and board by board. Consequently, there are sound reason for an historic district and the various regulations that have evolved to ensure the accuracy of integrity of our common history. I sympathize with the plight of the owners, Mrs. Bird and Mrs. Wood, new residents in town that bought the house with intent to remodel and live there. It was a worthy and commendable effort that we would hope any new homeowner would undertake. They have found themselves in a legal morass that may be galling to them, but as a result of ignorance of the guidelines of a historic district, not understanding constraints of remodeling in any historic district, and initially hiring unqualified persons to advise them. In sum, this was a situation that they could have avoided. Because of the situation at five seventeen A Mayor, he suggests that the Board of Adjustments perhaps in conjunction with the DRB, ask the city staff to prepare a short summary of historic guidelines, which has been done and we do have those and we do send them out. The mayor's situation has consumed many hours of staff time for consultation and preparation for three meetings of volunteer committee members who come to possible depending, depending on a decision. A conclusion that the owners out of ignorance failed to follow historic district guidelines. That concludes Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion by board members?
Couple of comments. First, in a historic district, it, cost benefit analysis isn't done like it would be in a, in a nonhistoric district. It leans towards preservation over cost. And if it's astronomical, then maybe you consider it, but I, you know, I think the preservation of the community is worth a little extra investment. My house took eight years to restore, and I'm glad they did, did a complete restoration. Second, demolition does not stand alone. There was a comment about the demolition should be viewed as a demolition. Demolition in a historic district is looked at, why are you going to demolish? What are you going to replace it with? If it's a demolish to then restore the identical same building in the condition and style that it originally was, then demolitions looked at differently than if you're just going to demolish the building and then at some time later come by and build a building that's very unlike the building that was there originally. I noticed the original building was six hundred square feet. The replacement building is sixteen hundred square feet. And I don't think those are identical. And then the last thing is, I, I hope people realize it's people on this board are not moved by flamboyant words and, you know, some of the statements made in the presentation, the written presentation were just unnecessary. But I, you know, I'd like to see, if it can be restored, it should be restored. And thank you. And I want to thank people, the other people who have joined the board. Because there were four of us, we had to be here every single time or we didn't have a forum. And even, and today, we, we have a committee that can be viable almost every meeting we have. Thank you, Bill, and the others that have joined the board. And thank you, Melissa. For taking on the onerous task of being the chair.
Okay. Are there other comments by the board?
I'd like to make a comment. Tyler Bradbury. I'm a local contractor. I don't know if this will contradict what I'm, this whole meeting. But I, you know, I've been and looked at this house as well. It was dilapidated. It was pretty bad shape. I also gave suggestions as how to rehab it. But, you know, with, with what they are proposing to demolish and what they propose to put back, even if they did, you know, at the eleventh hour change their mind, you know, running numbers and figuring that it might be more feasible to build something new. It's, it's, there's no way that with a sixteen hundred square foot building, it would be anywhere close to the cost of rehabbing this place. Rehabbing this structure will be half the cost of building something new. Cost shouldn't really be in the consideration of restoring a historic home, but it's been brought up many times. And so, you know, in my professional opinion and everything that I've done, I wanted to bring that factor up. But as far as it goes for demoing this building, it's, it's definitely rehab. That's what I'd have to say.
Thank you. Other comments by board members? I, I would like to make a comment, you know, and, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Higgins, are you ready to comment?
Go ahead. I do, but go you first.
Thank you, thank you. I have to concur with whomever said, I, I do feel a little bad for these homeowners not knowing what they were getting into with the historic renovation. Like many of you here, I also live in a nineteen fourteen home and it is a continuous process. It is a continuous process with your permits. And, you know, that is the nature of the beast. If, if, to do, to do your best and to follow the rules. And a couple of things jump out at me that, that they didn't apply for their permits in correct time that changed their minds without really consulting the inspectors. So I am also going to vote to uphold the DRB's decision to, to deny, so, thank you. Mr. Higgins, are you ready to speak, sir?
Uh, yes, I, I feel bad for the applicants. That I think that part of it was they just really didn't know what the rules were, what was going on. And they tried to take shortcuts without really realizing, you know, the consequences. And for them personally, I personally feel bad for them. I, they probably think that they have been singled out, but they haven't. All, all, all they're being asked to do is follow the rules, like everybody else is asked to do. I truly believe that. And having said that, if there's nobody else that has anything to say, I'd like to move to affirm the decision of the Designer Review Board to deny demolition of five seventeen A Mayor.
A second.
Here's a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, well, just one point to what Bill just said. This process, they, they applied for a restoration remodel. But started to demolish as opposed to restore or remodel. So the, the criteria for the demolish was based on the work that they had done to partially demolish it to begin with. And we have to be careful that people think they can apply for a remodel, make the property unlivable, and then apply for a demolish as a shortcut to actually doing the work right from the very beginning. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Bill, for your comments.
Mr. Essens, can I do a roll call vote so I can make sure I get all of them?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Tyler Bradbury?
Aye.
Melissa Hartman?
Aye.
Bill Higgins?
Aye.
Tom Patterson?
Aye.
Anthony Underwood?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Um, with that, if there is no more discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
You can have it, Bill. I second it.
All right. Any discussion?
All those in favor, you have to take a vote. Sorry.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Essens, for giving us such valuable contribution. And Naina, thank you for keeping us in line once again.